The executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of September 9, 2021 was convened in the conference room of the Wayne Board of Education, 15 Ellis Drive Way, New Jersey. The statement of compliance setting forth time, date, and location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Publics Meetings Act, and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please rise for a flag salute and a moment of silence for the victims of 9/11.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a mover to reconvene? Mrs. Putup?
Mrs. Albanese.
Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
And Mrs. Shear?
Dr. Toback, do you want to start your presentation now?
I'll do my history summary.
Okay, you'll give me, let me know when you want us to, okay, very good.
We would please report that while there were some bumps on the road, the opening of school went well at 14 of our schools. The early childhood center at Preakness School did not have school for students today, but instead had a parent orientation, an ice cream social, and a PTO meeting, but the students at the ECC will start school tomorrow. I'd like to thank all of our employees for a successful start for the school year. Our teachers did a wonderful job with welcoming our students and doing a beautiful job with creating a warm and friendly environment. Our custodial maintenance and facilities department did a wonderful job with preparing our buildings, and today our students and staff walked into well-stocked and extremely clean school buildings. Additionally, I would like to thank all members from the administrative team in our buildings and in the central office for making sure that our schools have adequate inventory of instructional supplies and everything they need for a successful start for the school year. I'd also like to mention that there is some exciting news for all of New Jersey. Every year, Education Week produces an annual quality counts report where every state's education system is ranked. I'm pleased to announce that for the second consecutive year, New Jersey public schools were ranked as the top, New Jersey was ranked as the top state for education by Education Week. The close second was Massachusetts. So that's really, that's quite an accomplishment for our whole state, and I'd like to just do a round of applause for all the educators in New Jersey, all the boards of education, for all that they're doing to advance public education. As mentioned, there were some bumps on the road today, and one problem we had was our new phone system. So, Mr. Moffett, if you could just give a very quick update on our phones and also advise parents if there's an issue with the phone system, it's only in very limited areas.
Right. Due to the recent flooding at the district's bus depot located at the North Cove, we had to relocate our dispatchers for the school buses to Preakness School and the move to other locations with buses. As a result of these moves, we are experiencing telephone issues mainly in the transportation office, which we are working to resolve. Please be patient with us as we anticipate to restore normal operations in the phone sometime next week. In the event you cannot get through to them, feel free to do two things at this point. You can email. The email address is wtpss underscore transportation at wayneschools dot com, and one phone line is available. I'll give it to everybody here tonight. It's (201) 713-5817, and hit extension (2640). And again, if you can't get through on that number because we are experiencing a high volume of telephone traffic, feel free again to use that email address, again, wtpss underscore transportation at wayneschool dot com. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to move along with my report. So I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about full-day kindergarten. So it was very exciting. It was really very delightful to be able to gather this morning to celebrate and welcome our first full-day kindergarten students here in Wayne. Today, we saw 489 full-day kindergarten students enter the school system. As you all know, it has been a three-year journey to get where we are today since we initially announced our plan to bring kindergarten into the district. But the journey really started seven years ago when several Wayne parents banded together, and there was an upswell of support for full-day kindergarten. While it was not financially feasible at the time, it set the ball rolling to consider how full-day kindergarten might be possible because the district needed to invest in both full-day kindergarten and early childhood education because our buildings are not large enough to host both full-day kindergarten and our early childhood pre-kindergarten programs. The other factor that allowed us to move ahead was our new governor, and ultimately he decided to invest in our state's public schools by increasing state aid to almost every school district after many years of significant reductions. So overall, it was not easy to get to today. It was great to have a part in delivering something that people of Wayne have been seeking for so many years. To be honest, the plan to bring full-day kindergarten to Wayne was a little bit risky because it was reliant on some things out of our control, things like state aid, extraordinary aid, continued support through three budget cycles. Those are all certainly things that are not guaranteed. School finance is built on stability, and with most costs being fixed and increases kept to a minimum, it's not easy to add significant additional costs into the budget, recognizing there's also a 2% cap. At the same time, the stars at least over Wayne were aligned. For example, the Preakness School New Win, even though it was operating as a branch of the library a few years ago, was once an elementary school. It was last used in the 1970s, but it had two things that we needed most already in place. So one of those things was plumbing. The Preakness School, original school buildings, had plumbing in place for bathrooms in each of the classrooms. So upon reconstruction, the plumbing was available, and that kept the cost very reasonable. Secondly, the preschool, the Preakness School, had 12 classrooms that we needed to house our early childhood program in one location, and the office space and space for other therapeutic services. One last benefit for the community, a few years ago, the future of Preakness School was in question. It needed a lot of work, and with no specific purpose at the time, it would have been difficult to justify the additional expense in order to complete renovations. With all of the new construction projects coming to Wayne, Preakness School has become essential in housing the additional new students we'll be seeing in the future as these projects are completed. To give you some sense of the cost, year one of the plan involved $1.5 million in renovation to the Preakness School, including security and fire alarm upgrades, and the installation of playground equipment, which was primarily funded by donations. Year two involved hiring our initial staff and our principal, Jessica Hammond. Child study team, support staff, and all of the technology and furniture needs were also put in place at a cost of $1.2 million. This year, we included an additional $1.9 million in the budget, and most of those funds will go towards staffing and instructional supplies. We more than doubled the size of our kindergarten staff to accommodate the nearly 500 students we have enrolled in our full-day kindergarten program today. So I'd like to just close by taking a moment to recognize the number of people, including our former director of facilities, John Meso, and our interim director, Bob Blanchard. I'd also like to thank our district tradespeople for all the work they did in completing as much work as they could in-house, and also Murray Paving and Construction for their excellent work on this project. Thanks to Bill Moffett for his work on both the budget and oversight of each phase of the renovation work. Thanks to Director of Elementary Education, Donna Auerbach, for developing both an excellent early childhood program for our pre-K students and an excellent full-day kindergarten program. Thanks to our Assistant Superintendent, Donna Reichman, for her ongoing work in the development of both academic programs and her many suggested design ideas throughout the project. Thank you to Dr. Jessica Hammond, the ECC principal, for putting it all together into a high-performing early childhood center. Thank you to all the parents who offered ideas and advocated for full-day kindergarten. And finally, thank you to all the board of education members, past and present, for all of their contributions in making this idea a reality for the community. Without the continued support from the board of education, none of this would have been possible. As far as the HIB report goes, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township Public School District. There was one incident investigated since the last report, and it was deemed to not be in the category of HIB. So this time, what we'd like to do is go on to a presentation. So that everyone can see the presentation, we could take a few minutes because the board is going to have to move from their location to the seats down below, and Mrs. Reichman is going to take over. We're going to discuss, last year, there was, when it comes to communication about our plan and about all the information that's necessary for parents to know about, there was a lot, there was a lot of, there were situations where people would say, well, listen, we have like 50 pages of stuff to read, we have 100 pages of stuff to read from the board of education. We tried to do everything we could to simplify basically the information that is, the information parents ask about most. So right now, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Reichman, and she's going to do the presentation on our district website. This time, board members, if you'd like to come down below.
Thank you, Dr. Toback. Before we continue, I don't want to gloss over that full-day kindergarten so quickly. I'd like a round of applause for everyone involved for bringing that important program to Wayne. Thank you. Can you hear me? Is this better?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Over the past week, many of you have reached out with questions about the return-to-school plan. I know many people were on vacation when we made the last presentation. There are also people who are trying to plan weekend travel and thinking about the upcoming holidays and were seeking out information. As Dr. Toback shared, we were trying to figure out the simplest way to share this information so that you have easy access, and of course, you're always welcome to reach out to me, and I'm happy to respond. But again, we'd like you to have this at your fingertips. We have been updating this up through today, and we'll continue to do some, do so so that you have real-time information. On the top of our homepage, if you see right where the cursor is, there's a back-to-school tab. If you go to that, it brings you to this page, and what you'll see is on the side here, we have information related to any topic that you may have questions about. We also, and I shared this at the last meeting, have this simple diagram at the bottom, and if you click right on the yellow dot. My apologies, there's a filter on this computer. So you will have access to it at home. I did indicate at the last meeting that you also can access this diagram from your phones. All of the information that's shared on the schoolhouse is consistent with the information that's shared on the side. And I'll just take you through a simple tab. Vaccination status brings you right here, and you have the most up-to-date information. Many of you have asked about travel. That was a big one. On this page, you'll find there's two links right here for domestic travel and international travel. If there's any updates provided by the Department of Health and the CDC and the New Jersey Department of Education, it will be updated here in real time. So as you're making plans, you could keep referring back to the website. Another question that has come up quite a bit is physical distancing, and I think it's important to highlight that we have made every effort. We had a wonderful first day of school. I was able to get out and visit many of the schools. We've made every effort wherever and whenever possible to maintain three feet of distance between our students, and we are advising teachers to maintain six feet of distance. This is super important because when wearing a mask, if three feet of distance is maintained, six feet for teachers, and if there is a situation with a COVID outbreak or a reported COVID case in a classroom, as long as we can reveal through the contact tracing process that masks were worn and students were properly distanced, we would not have to quarantine those students. The goal, obviously, is to keep schools open and to keep our students and teachers in school, which is why it's super, super important to maintain all of these roles and be consistent across all schools and all grades pre-K through 12. Again, at your leisure, take a look and just browse through the tabs that we have here. If there's anything that you think would be helpful to share out, just write to me, and we're happy to continue to add to this. It's a work in progress. It's here for our community to provide information at ease and allow you to have it at your fingertips. My apologies for the interactive diagram and the filter. You will be able to easily access it on your home screen and on your phones. So you're welcome to try it. Any suggestions, please reach out. We're always happy to hear from you. Thank you. Does that conclude your report, Dr. Toback?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Moffett, revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we have a few tonight. Under the Emergence section, Section T, which is Human Resources, number one, approval of appointment of district staff for the 2021-2022 school year. Remove the following, line number eight, Rosemarie Almonte. Number 11, Michael Sarbone. Number three, that is item number three, approval to rescind items. Add number five, which is Diane Ascione, A.S.C.I.O.N.E., S.C.P.A., James Fallon, resignation date August 31, 2021. Number four, approval of additional compensation. Number seven, block schedule lunch supervision on attachment before Wayne Hills, remove number one, Ala Asia, and replace with Scott Summers. Add on Wayne Valley, number 37, Margaret, and I'll spell the last name, Q-U-I-N-T-A-V-E-L-L-A. Add number 38, Lauren, spell the last name, A.S.P.I.A.Z.U. On number 13, which is the sixth period assignment on attachment, all assignments that are not full year, stipend should read prorated. On number 25, revise stipend from $12,221 to $24,442 prorated. Number 39, again on number 13, revise stipend from $11,500 to $23,000, and remove number 132, which is Teresa Johnson. And finally, no, I'm sorry, there's two more left. Number five, approval of extracurricular advisory secondary on attachment, George Washington Middle School, remove number 10, Michael Sarbone, instrumental and vocal show, step number one, 0.5 at $1,184. And lastly, under number 19, approval of paraprofessional assignment on attachment, remove number 189, Just Sepanina, and I'll spell the last name, T.R.I.P.I.C.C.H.O. That concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Before we begin the public portion, I just want to make a couple of comments. You'll notice that there is no longer a sign and sheet at the podium. We've had some issues with people taking photographs of it, and some people have a level of discomfort with their information being so accessible. So along those lines, per our policy, if anyone doesn't feel comfortable giving their street address, you do not have to. You can state your name and that you are a Wayne resident only. If you are from out of town, we would prefer, per our policy, that you say so and your business here, if you're affiliated with some group or whatever the reason may be. And those are the changes. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students can be legally responded, cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
I'll move.
Mr. Bubba?
Second.
Mr. Giordano. Okay. Agenda items only. Anyone?
Seeing no one rise, Mrs. Kazan, I move to close.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Giordano. Okay, let's move on to the agenda. We have committees that met this evening. Who would like to go first? Mrs. Shear.
The Technology and Safety Committee met tonight with myself, Dr. Burchard, and Michael Bubba. We discussed some summer projects. The technology department worked on network upgrades that were originally delayed due to COVID. We have a new content filter. It's a new web-based content filter, filter, and this appliance gives the district access to new features to inspect student traffic. We, the department purchased a new tool called Go Guardian for the staff. It's to help them in better engage the students while they're on their Chromebooks. The tool allows teachers to gain valuable instructional time by keeping students on task. And as far as our one-to-one Chromebooks, they rolled out new Chromebooks for students grades one, five, six, and nine, and with this change, the district is now one-to-one in grades K through 12.
That was it. Thank you, Mrs. Shear. Next, Mrs. Putup?
The Finance Committee met this evening, Mrs. Kazan and myself, and our administrators, Mr. Moffett, and Ms. Leidig. We reviewed the check register, various financial reports, our contracts and transportation agreements. We had an update on the audit. The auditors came back into the district, and they've been here for about a week and a half. They will be done shortly, and the audit report will be available before the end of the year. The new demographic study will be done shortly. We went through three policies that pertain to the Finance Committee, and Mr. Moffett also unveiled the 2223 budget plan. And if any board member has a suggestion about the budget calendar or something that they would like to see for the upcoming budget year, please feel free to contact Mr. Moffett's office. Thank you.
Anyone on this side?
Mr. Giordano.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett.
The Education Committee met today. Ms. Albanese, myself, and Donna Reichman were in attendance for it. The agenda covered the review of the July 19th and August 19th committee minutes and agenda items. We're very happy to reach the dual agreements for dual credits at Bergen Community College, Seton Hall University, LIM College, Lincoln Tech, and at FDU. Onto the curriculum area, we reviewed elementary science, secondary MS or middle school, ELA basic skills, and secondary high school world history curriculum changes. There was a couple of walk-ins regarding residency that were also reviewed. Thank you.
Anyone else with a committee assignment? I noticed there's some people in the back of the room that aren't wearing a mask. Officer, did we have exemptions for these gentlemen in the back? Would appreciate if everyone follows the rules. Okay. We'll wait till it's. Police officer will handle that. Can I get a mover? The agenda?
Madam President, I move that we move the entire agenda as one item. Thank you.
Second. Full agenda, Mrs. Putup? Second. Mr. Giordano? Discussion. Do you have any questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano? Second. Mr. Bubba?
Torrey Esposito, Woodlot Road. I have no issue where people know where I live. I believe in the Second Amendment. Woodlot Road, thank you. So I need something explained to me about what was buried.
Sir, can I just stop you a minute? We don't have our timekeeper going yet.
Okay, sorry.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Vice President's swollen down on the job here.
Quick, quick question on the back-to-school forms. There was something buried about unvaccinated children can't leave the tri-state area, and if they do, they need to stay home for 10 days. That counts as absences with no instruction, so I'd like that clarified. Dr. Toback, Ms. Reichman, next week will be 84 degrees on Monday. Are you making masks optionals, or are you waiting for kids to pass out? Any, I'd like the board's thoughts on the crowd at the Valley football game last Friday? Thoughts on the teacher's lunch last week that happened at Anthony Wayne with maskless teachers taking selfies that were somehow taken down, which is interesting? And also, what's the reasoning for having the meeting at a school? It's certainly not for the crowd of people that are here. Is it because a certain Democratic Ward candidate complained that about it at the last planning board meeting? Did you think we wouldn't show up because we have to be muzzled? We won't be muzzled, not today, not tomorrow, and not anytime soon. It starts November 2nd. It starts with dethroning the king, and it's easy as one, two, three.
Ryan Badischill, 63, Camilo Drive.
Can't hear you.
I'll have to take it down.
Is it on?
Is it on?
Better.
Okay. Ryan Badischill, 63, Camilo Drive. I'd like to disagree with some of the comments previously. This was not, this was not a good day at school. This was not a friendly day at school. And I'm not talking about the masks. I'm not talking about the letter that went out at 2:00 PM on a Friday when certain members decided to then leave directly afterwards and not come back until today. I'm not talking about the last-minute procedures put in place to override doctors
Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover?
Move.
Mr. Giordano? Second. Mr. Bubba?
Torrey Esposito, Woodlot Road. I have no issue where people know where I live. I believe in the Second Amendment. Woodlot Road. Thank you. So I need something explained to me about what was buried...
Sir, can I just stop you a minute? We don't have our timekeeper going yet.
Sorry.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Vice President's swollen down on the job here.
Quick question on the back-to-school forms. There was something buried about unvaccinated children can't leave the tri-state area and if they do, they need to stay home for 10 days. That counts as absences with no instruction, so I'd like that clarified. Dr. Toback, Ms. Reichman, next week will be 84 degrees on Monday. Are you making masks optionals or are you waiting for kids to pass out? Any, I'd like the board's thoughts on the crowd at the Valley football game last Friday? Thoughts on the teacher's lunch last week that happened at Anthony Wayne with maskless teachers taking selfies that were somehow taken down, which is interesting? And also, what's the reasoning for having the meeting at a school? It's certainly not for the crowd of people that are here. Is it because a certain Democratic Ward candidate complained that about it at the last planning board meeting? Did you think we wouldn't show up because we have to be muzzled? We won't be muzzled, not today, not tomorrow, and not anytime soon. It starts November 2nd. It starts with dethroning the king and it's easy as one, two, three.
Ryan Badischil, 63, Camilo Drive.
Can't hear you.
I'll have to take it down.
Is it on?
Is it on?
Better.
Okay. Ryan Badischil, 63, Camilo Drive. I'd like to disagree with some of the comments previously. This was not, this was not a good day at school. This was not a friendly day at school. And I'm not talking about the masks. I'm not talking about the letter that went out at 2:00 PM on a Friday when certain members decided to then leave directly afterwards and not come back until today. I'm not talking about the last-minute procedures put in place to override doctor's notes. I'm not even talking about the parents that are splitting from each other and causing splits in our schools and our children. I'm talking about the kids in the school. I'm talking about how there is vaccination bias going on within the school, people calling each other out and saying, "I will not go near you because you have not been vaccinated." I'm talking about racism in our school today, this morning. I don't care what they're saying. I want you to listen to me. Today, this morning, when my daughter went into school and the girl next to her said, "Black lives matter, white lives don't. You're white, you don't matter." This is going on in your school, driven by your agendas that have been complained about continuously, and this is what we have been warning you about. And on the first day back at school, on the first morning back at school, this has occurred here in this town, in your schools. And I'm not even talking about the high school. This was at Lafayette. This was an elementary school. These were fourth graders. And if you think this kind of thing is acceptable, this is what you are bringing in. Every time you start saying that there is a need to have separation in race, every time that you start saying, "We need to be standing up here and calling out all of these different things from all of these different communities," you start creating segregation. And you start making these things happen, and this is your responsibility now. And I expect you to solve it fast.
Can I take my mask off to speak? Or I have to keep it on? I can take it off? Oh, okay. All right, I'm here to, oh, Jim Freeswick, Wayne, New Jersey. I'm here to obtain a clarification of the school district's mandatory vaccination policy. First of all, I'm referring to Executive Order 253 by Governor Murphy regarding mandatory vaccinations of school district employees. As I, as I read this, this order, it requires school district employees to get vaccinated against COVID-19, except that they're, they can opt out and instead get tested either once or twice weekly. And then, however, if you read further in that order, paragraph seven says, "Nothing in this order shall prevent a covered setting from instituting a vaccination or testing policy that includes additional or stricter requirements, so long as such policy comports with the minimum requirements of this order. A covered setting may also maintain a policy that requires more frequent testing of covered workers." So I'm asking for a clarification. What exactly is the policy of this school district regarding mandatory vaccinations of its employees? Will it institute a stricter requirement than is required by Executive Order 253? Will it, will it make vaccination a condition of employment and eliminate the option to get tested? Are you allowed to do that under the law? Will you institute more frequent testing? And frankly, I don't understand the order where it says get tested once or twice. Which is it? Once or twice? And who makes that determination? The local school board? I, you know, I don't understand that. I need a clarification of that as well. But I think it's important that the, that the board institute a mandatory vaccination policy for its employees in order to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in the schools, in order to protect the students as well as the teachers and the administrators and the staff. I just need a clarification as to what exactly is the mandatory vaccination policy of this school district?
Hello, could you hear me? My name is Nicholas Delianessis. I'm not going to give my address, but I have a question for you, Mrs. Kazan. When I spoke at my, at the July 15th meeting, when I spoke at the July 15th meeting in the municipal chambers, at the end of when I was speaking, you said that if you had anything to say about it, we will be breathing in September, and you did not act upon that on August 26th. You acted against...
I can't hear if you applaud. I'm sorry, continue.
You acted against us. You acted against my fellow students. If you're curious what my first day of school was like, this, this is how it was like. When I walked in, I, it was a normal day, except I couldn't see smiles. If you're not going to let me see people's face, you'd expect me to be able to hear and socialize. Let's go to lunch. When I was at lunch, I would, I was forced into a tiny cubicle, forced to wear a mask at every second without any breaks. Like you said, I would have mask breaks throughout the day. I did not have one throughout all seven hours of the day. And when I would ask for one, they said that you will be the reason our schools close and you could kill people. Why would your staff tell me something like that? Why would that happen in your district? Why would you lie to me about us having mask breaks? You lied. That's not true, true. You already passed the opportunity to get rid of the mandate. At least give us breaks. At least enforce us to have breaks. We weren't able to go outside today during the rain, so we were inside. So when I was in a cubicle with a mask on, I could assume, "Can I have a mask break?" I asked, and they said, "No, no, you can't. That's not allowed because you're going to kill people with the Delta variant." That's what I was told. That is completely unacceptable for someone to tell me that. And this board always talks about me and my fellow students as if we are your pawns and we, we are almost like objects. We are not talked about as humans. I want you to acknowledge me and my fellow students as humans, human beings. We deserve a right to breathe. To this moment, ever since 2:45, my, my face is all irritated. It has rashes. It's painful because I had to wear a mask with no break for seven hours throughout this day since eight in the morning, and you allow that. You let that be okay. Today, I also had a few students come up and say, "Thank you for coming to the meeting and speaking for me. I agree with you and I thank you," because they couldn't do the same. So it's not just me, it's a bunch of students that agree with me. And the fact that I don't have a board that even cares about my well-being and my fellow students' well-being is sad, sad to me. Sad to me.
Seeing no one coming to the podium, I move to close, Mrs. Kazan.
I wrote some stuff down this time to make sure I got all my points across. Mark Faber.
Delianessis, sir.
Mark Faber, Wayne. So I want to share some perspectives on people who support all this new teaching stuff, some interesting developments in the school and in the country, and then I have some questions. So first, the perspectives on the people who support CRT, equity, and a lot of, a lot of this other ideological stuff. I've been told disagreeing with teaching CRT, SEL, gender identity, or anal sex makes me racist, sexist, homophobic, or even a white supremacist. Emotion, perception, individual truth are more reliable than facts, statistics, and logic. The rallying cry of "My body, my choice" is perfectly acceptable for abortion, but not for vaccines and masks. If a black person does not believe they are a victim of racism in the United States, they are branded a sellout Uncle Tom or even the black face of white supremacy. Yesterday, a white woman wore a gorilla mask and threw eggs at a black Republican candidate for governor in California, but no news outlets covered the story. No one called it a racist act, but the media is quick to say that Kamala Harris's approval ratings are so low just because she's black and she's a woman. They claim voter ID laws are racist and disproportionately impact minorities and suppress their ability to vote because they're not able to get the proper ID. However, they support vaccine passports, firearms IDs, driver's licenses, and passports. They claim all white people have an inherent bias, an inherent racist bias, whether they know it or not, and obtain success not from hard work but from white privilege. These same people often resort to bullying or censorship to silence people who disagree. How did we get to a place where it's completely acceptable to judge the beliefs and motives of all white people when we have been fighting for so long that people should be judged by the content of their character and not the color of their skin? How did, how do these people rationalize taking the opposite position of multiple issues that share the same basis for an argument? Do these perspectives seem to support inclusivity of all people regardless of race, gen, religion, sexual orientation, and that we are all equal? Do these people truly care about other people or do they support the causes because it makes them feel better about themselves and in their own minds that they are morally superior? Are these teachings what we want for our children? Is this the definition of critical thinking in our country? Some interesting developments in schools in the country. Objective standards for grading students have been deemed racist in some school districts and are being eliminated in favor of more subjective measures focused on progress rather than subject mastery. A public school system in New York introduced a new curriculum teaching all white people play a part in perpetuating systemic racism. Kindergarten classes are shown videos of black children shot and killed by police, instructing them about the dangers of police brutality. Several schools have segregated classrooms, provide safe spaces for minority students away from their white classmates. In the name of equity, the Virginia Department of Education is seeking to eliminate its accelerated math programs below 11th grade. Teacher fired after being exposed as an Antifa recruiter where he bragged he has 180 days to turn children into revolutionaries. I'm back.
Before you continue, sir, is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this portion? You'll have to wait until the end, sir.
All right, I'll come back.
Good evening, board members. Today was the first day of school, as we all know. I would just like to take a minute out to thank certainly all our custodians, our secretaries, our building administration, no matter what side of the issue you might be on any of this, there is no doubt that they did just incredible work. I know today also the Director of Elementary Ed and the Director of Secondary Ed, they are in their respective schools seeing how things were going. I think it speaks very well for the administration that this is, this is going on, and I just want to thank all the people, on behalf of the teachers. We'd like to thank all of those parties for just everything they did to get us going today.
Hello, Don Chala, Wayne Valley, 2012, Rutgers, 2017. I'd like to clear up some confusion for both the Board of Ed and the public. Critical race theory is a law school legal theory. Here's what Fox News says, courtesy of frequent guest and political strategist Christopher Ruffalo, admitted to doing, and I quote, "We have successfully frozen their brand, critical race theory, into the public conversation and are steadily driving up negative perceptions. We will eventually turn it toxic. The goal is to have the public read something crazy in the newspaper and immediately think critical race theory. We have decodified the term and will recode it to annex the entire range of cultural constructions that are unpopular with Americans." Next, on the May 19th edition of Fox News Special Report with Brett Baer, the anchor announced, "It appears CRT is becoming the new hot button issue on the campaign trail." After that, Fox News Chief Washington correspondent Mike Emanuel said, "If this issue works on the governor's race in November in certain swing states, it'll likely be part of the GOP campaign playbook in the midterm elections next year. This is not a conspiracy theory. This was admitted to straight from the horse's mouth, the crime and the confession. It's a rich man's trick. The goal is to spread a big lie, make parents into single-issue voters for midterm elections, particularly the swing states. Here's my idea. The Wayne Board of Ed should write a letter to the NJ Department of Education. Dear NJ Department of Education, the board has heard from a substantial number of community members at its recent public meetings. Many of those participating in the public comment portion have expressed beliefs that critical race theory, that Fox News trick, and other right-wing media fear-mongering nonsense are deep in the 2020 New Jersey Student Learning Standards that you have provided, even though these community members haven't read the Student Learning Standards. Let's trust them. After considering the concerns expressed by those individuals, we request that you change the NJ SLS to meet the agenda of the most outspoken members of this aspiring hate group, including dehumanizing people who are not white and heterosexual. That's fine, A-OK, because they're not a minority in our town. Teaching that science is a matter of public debate, not the documented observation, identification, description, experimental investigation, and theoretical explanation of phenomena performed by intelligent people. Teach abstinence instead of sex ed, because, ha, ha, abstinence, that's going to work great, am I right? Freedom and democracy, what do they mean? They mean that my ignorance is just as good as your knowledge. Please change the curriculum to match that accordingly. And yes, please continue to give us lots of money to teach all this. Thank you, Wayne Board of Ed.
Cindy Simon-Ratzer, Wayne. No one should be made to feel that they are less than or that they don't matter. That includes a white child. That includes a homosexual child. That includes a child that doesn't identify as gender typical. Nobody should be subject to division. But the reality is, the Wayne Board of Ed, the folks sitting up here didn't start that. Division existed long before anyone on this board ever got elected. When I went to school, kids picked on me because I was different. I suspect when my parents went to school, kids picked on the different kids then too. The reality is that these differences are there. We need to celebrate where we are similar. We need to share where we have common ground, but we need to acknowledge the differences. I was told that I couldn't go to people's houses because I couldn't see, and I understand why people believe that. There's a young man standing up there repeating what he's been told, that if you can't see someone's face, if you can't see someone's smile, you can't socialize. I can't see anyone's face in this room. I can't recognize anyone's face in this room. Does that mean I can't socialize? Does that mean I can't live a full, normal life? I don't blame the young man for repeating what he's told. I think he truly believes it. I will tell you from my totally blind friends from birth, my legally blind friends, those who can't recognize faces, we socialize just fine. It is important that we have an inclusive education that teaches people about the different ways people's life's experiences are and how they go about life, so that people that are different from the usual aren't the targets of discrimination, aren't the targets of exclusion, and aren't made to feel like we don't matter and we don't belong.
Nicholas, you need to wait until everyone has spoken. I'm sorry. Ma'am? Well, that's our policy, ma'am. Go right ahead. He can stand to the side. He'll be left.
My name is Arith Cardenas from Sunset Terrace, and my comments are regarding CRT. You're looking to change the curriculum to address racism and inclusivity. So my question to you, the board, since you are the ones representing us, you're the sample representing the larger population, who of you have taught your children to be And to exclude people that are different from themselves? Because it certainly can't just be us. What makes you think that if you didn't teach your children to be racists, the rest of us did? And I don't see any diversity on this board either. What I see is a bunch of rich white people, and according to your inclusivity training, each one of you is the problem. Right? So of course, I don't actually believe that, but you see my point. I was judging you by the color of your skin, not what you've done to help the Wayne community, not how you've raised your children, and not by your morals and ethics. Critical race theory makes race the lens... Critical race theory makes race the lens through which proponents analyze all aspects of American life. It's an effort to reimagine the United States as a nation driven by racial groups, each with a specific claim on victimization. CRT divides along racial lines by creating negative stereotypes rather than seeing people as individuals made in God's image. It teaches one group that they are the oppressors and the other that they are the oppressed, and every single person falls into one of those two categories. So tell me how children can learn and grow if half of them are constantly being told they're less than. The fact is, they're not less than. They're all equal, every race, every shade, equal. No one better than the other, so why teach them that? And for whatever it's worth, mi esposo es mexicano. My husband is Mexican, born in Mexico, and never once has he felt marginalized or discriminated against at work or in our community, the white community. If anything, black and brown people tell him he's too white, and what does that mean? Where do you draw the line? Since when does work ethic and success equal racist? Where does the victim mentality end? It never will if you teach it. Applying the philosophy of critical race theories, or social-emotional learning, or inclusivity training, or whatever it is you'd like to call it, would only violate a multitude of American civil rights laws by treating people differently according to their race. It should not be elevated in American classrooms, and we, the people, do not support it.
Michael Fatale, Stone Hill Road. First and foremost, I want to thank the Wayne Police Department for being here today, protecting us. We appreciate the effort of the men and women of that department. Something that we all could agree on, it is very nice to have full-day kindergarten today. It is a very good accomplishment, and thank you very much. As someone who attended kindergarten here, to be at school today at 3:20, even though I couldn't see the smile on my daughter's face, it was very nice to be there when all other kids were getting out. As a family who has two parents who work all day, it has helped us drastically. So that being said, I wanted to say thank you for implementing full-day kindergarten here. Thank you.
Louisa Woolshire, Wayne resident. I am not going to plead with you to save our children tonight as I have in the past. Instead, I'm asking for help with statistics. I tried to find the COVID stats on children in Wayne. No hospital will give them out. The Wayne Health Department is also silent. Is that because there are zero cases? You say you aren't the experts, but do you at least know the numbers? It's really disturbing that no one on this board can have a medical conversation, but yet you are practicing medicine with our children. This is a national emergency, right? And you are in charge of our kids in a national emergency, making medical decisions for them, right? Can you at the very least find a medical expert in Wayne who can speak to us? Who can answer, how many hospitalizations do we have of children here in Wayne? My hypothesis is there are zero. Zero kids in hospitals due to COVID, just like there were zero deaths of kids under 18 in all of New Jersey. Again, zero. And I'm guessing, guessing, prove me wrong, zero kids in hospitals. Hmm. Could it be because this virus has a 99.9 survival rate in children? That's almost zero deaths, you guys. What are we doing? Have you thought of the risks of your medical interventions? What happens when our children have medical side effects due to the procedures you are mandating? Who is liable for that? Since we are here practicing medicine, it is only just for you to produce someone who can speak to these issues, because the side effects will start soon. Lastly, why are you discriminating against unvaccinated children? Why does a vaccinated child not have to quarantine? The New Jersey Department of Public Health reported Wednesday that 14,813 fully vaccinated breakthrough cases of COVID have been identified so far. Clearly, the vaccine is not working like a true vaccine. Even if it provides the benefit of some decreased risk of getting COVID, the vaccinated still get it and pass it along. So I ask you again, why are you discriminating against the unvaccinated children when everyone has a risk of getting COVID and passing it along? Is it because they have a lower risk of, once they're jabbed? Because if the level of risk is the only element we're looking at here, then each child should be looked at individually for their level of risk for COVID? Then only the high-risk, unhealthy children would have to quarantine, is that fair? Or we can be fair and not punish anyone for their choices in life because no one should be forced to eat healthy or exercise or get jabbed? Just like you can't mandate healthy lifestyles, which I would love to do, to increase chances of survival, you can't mandate getting jabbed. No one is responsible for anyone else's health. You are not responsible for my child's health, I am. Please make the quarantining fair for all. Please stop the discrimination before it starts. Thank you.
My name is Tremaine Cunningham. I'm on 1,600 Rotsa Road. I too support the Second Amendment. I'm here tonight to give some perspective that many tonight don't have, being a healthcare administrator. So I want to say, I want to commend the board for the work you've done in keeping our community safe, our children safe. I understand all the moving parts and how difficult it is, because I do it for a very large health system every day. I have not had the luxury of being able to quarantine safely at home. I have been on the front line in healthcare since day one, so I have a different perspective. Discrimination? Are you kidding me? This is a health epidemic. People are dying. I am losing doctors every day who are fatigued, who are burning out, because people are dying. This is not to discriminate against the vaccinated and the unvaccinated, this is to put an end to an epidemic that is killing people every day. Yes, your child may not get it, yes, there may be zero COVID deaths of children under the age of 18, but they can pass the COVID virus on to an adult who will die if they're not vaccinated. The difference is, the vaccinated have a chance to survive. I can still get COVID, I'm vaccinated, but I may not die from it. I have a good chance to survive, and that's what this is about. So when you get to say things like, "Oh, it's, you know, you're compromising my rights", what about my rights to live? What about the rights of those that are dying in the hospital? You're taking up hospital beds because you're refusing to do your duty, which is to protect not just yourselves but each other. My eight-year-old daughter went to school today, she had a wonderful day. She wore her mask all day, she took it off when she went outside and took her breaks, she felt safe, she felt protected, she felt that you guys did everything you needed to do so that she can go to school and feel safe and not transmit any disease back home to us, to her grandmother. We also don't want our teachers getting sick, because I can't afford to have you guys shut down the school again. Those of us that had to teach these kids last night, I'm not a teacher, it was hard. So I need my teachers to be safe. I need the kids to be safe. So please, don't politicize something that shouldn't be politicized. Learn the facts. Come spend a day working on the front lines with me and my doctors. Come help us put toe tags on dead bodies in ice trucks before you stand up here and talk about your rights and discrimination. If the dead could talk, I bet you they'd have a different story to tell. They'd be happy to wear a mask, to take the vaccine, just to take another breath. At the end of the day, this is not about politics. This is a health epidemic.
That's your time, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Maria De Luca Pranzo, Wayne, New Jersey. First of all, I just wanted to thank the Board of Ed for implementing full-day kindergarten. I think it is a wonderful addition to our town. I think it makes our schools stronger, our community stronger, and I know it took a lot of work and effort to get us here, so thank you all for all the hard work that went into making that happen. I also wanted to say that my child, too, went to school today, and when I asked her how it was when she came home, she said, "It was great today," she goes, "But I'm tired and I have a lot of homework." So I really think that our children take their cues from their parents, and they reflect and mirror the beliefs and feelings that their parents have. So if we want to make our child's day better, then we need to be positive about what's happening in school, about our ability to go to school, and if it means wearing a mask, so be it. If it means getting a vaccine, so be it, because I know, so I know that my child is much better off learning in school than being virtual at home. And I know that most people feel that way. I know that most people would rather have their children in school where they can learn from their teachers, see their classmates, interact with one another, socialize, and that's what school is all about. It's not just about the education, it's about the socialization. It's very difficult to do virtually. So I support anything that helps to keep our children in school and safe. I'd also like to thank the police that are here today and in our community for keeping all of us safe, for keeping the community safe, and for keeping everything running smoothly. And then lastly, I've heard some discussion about the curriculum and how there's discrimination in the curriculum. I think there's a misunderstanding about what's being proposed in the curriculum. I read through it, I read through the whole thing. There is no discrimination in the curriculum. The curriculum talks about inclusivity, about making sure we include others, about making sure we celebrate diversity, not shun one another. And any misunderstanding that others here may have about that, I would implore them to go back and look and see what it actually says in the Wayne, New Jersey curriculum, not what you see in another state, not what you see on TV, but what it actually says in the curriculum, because there's nothing but positive feedback and positive policies that I can see in that curriculum. So that was it, I just wanted to thank everybody and have a great day.
Pam Masick. I received a letter today saying that you had a discussion in executive session about my employment status. Do you have an answer to this?
Mr. Gephardt, can you advise the board on this topic?
Yeah, the board is not allowed to discuss personnel matters in public.
So you can't tell me if you fired me or not? It's my job, you can say it. I was supposed to be allowed to respond, but I didn't get this letter till this afternoon. There was no way for me to respond, even though it was written on the second and stamped on the third.
Ma'am, I suggest you contact our HR department.
Excuse me, ma'am?
This is not a topic for public discussion.
Yeah, again...
It said I could have it done publicly, I got nothing to hide.
Do you have another item for discussion?
I'm here today as a concerned parent, hoping to get answers to some questions, possibly take steps towards better dialogue and transparency between the Board of Ed trustees and the community. For three months, we've been engaged in what seems like a battle with Board of Ed members who were elected to represent all school parents and children in the Wayne community. From my perspective, it seems as though a number of our representatives have made this more about themselves, their personal preferences, and an agenda that supports party politics. This one time, I hope I'm wrong. Many parents and some students have been at the podium repeatedly requesting the freedom of choice regarding the wearing of masks. Ms. Kazan stated at the August 19 Board of Ed meeting, "Masks are mandated, and they're mandated by medical professionals, which we're not. We're not health experts. That should not be our job. It's a decision I'm not willing to make to put anyone's life at risk in our school district. We have too many people in our buildings for me to be wrong about that." Sounds reasonable. This leads me to my first question. Tell me you're a hypocrite without telling me you're a hypocrite, and I'll go first. Ms. Kazan, why after that meeting did you and your friend, Ms. Pranzo, go to Maggie's, no masks and no social distancing? Why do you get to have your freedom of choice? Aren't you worried about the community, or does COVID only start on September 9? Ms. Reichman, you reported me for having my mask down while I was with learning disabled children during our break time and recommending I not be rehired, and I'm sure that's why. Then how come on August 18, you're at Trader Joe's, no mask, no gloves, breathing on the fruit, no social distancing? Why are you allowed to have freedom of choice?
Mrs. Masick, address the chair.
Why are you allowed to have freedom of choice? And now I'm gonna get fired? Learning disabled students need to have your facial cues at times, and when we have snacks, we're... Oh, I'll continue on my next round.
Hi, my name is Jacob Van Lunen. I'm a Wayne resident. It's hard to gather my thoughts after the insanity I just witnessed. Everybody cheering behind me should really be ashamed of themselves. Okay, now, before we get into anything, I think one of the most important things to talk about here is the fact that the mask mandate is a statewide mandate. The people in front of me right now have nothing to do with the mask mandate being enforced or not. If they don't enforce the mask mandate, our schools lose state funding, our property values go down, our property taxes go up, our children are less safe, our parents are less safe, we're less safe. You're like, I feel like none of you get that. Like, they're not in charge of this, they don't make that decision, and yet, everybody's here arguing that they do make that decision. It doesn't make any sense. I've also heard people bring up CRT here again. Again, this is a boogeyman. This is something that hasn't been brought up in the town of Wayne by anybody except for the people behind me right now. If you read the curriculum, there's nothing about CRT. It's a completely, like, made-up monster for them to all get riled up about, and it's absurd. That's all I have to say, and thank you guys for all the work you do.
My name is Sandy, and I live in Wayne, and I came here 8:30 at night, if you notice, with my kids. Getting them ready for bed is what I should be doing right now, where my oldest son, who started his first day at Wayne Valley, comes to me and says, "Mom, I have to tell you something, please don't get mad at me. Please don't get mad at me." All right, great, what happened? He opens up his Chromebook to show me some surveys, and right away I said, "Wait a minute, I filled out, I filled out the opt-out sheet where you will not be getting surveys. What is this all about?" So this is, so I'm here, can you explain to me what was that opt-out survey paper that I filled out in which I thought I was opting out of surveys? Because my son received a few in various classes, his math class, his biology class, I believe his English class as well, maybe others, I don't know. He submitted one of them, in which they asked him for his gender. What do you identify, what is your preferred gender for math class? This is math class, my son has a name, clearly he's a boy, you can refer to him as his first name, I'm not gonna say it, okay, I don't want to embarrass him because he's here tonight, or obviously him. What on earth does your preferred gender need to do with math class? And if I filled out that survey where I opted out, what good was that? Is that only for surveys that are given by the administrators? Because I'm not sure. Do the teachers take it upon themselves to decide if they also want to give out other surveys? And then, does it not count? Does my opt-out only count for official surveys given by administrators? That's my confusion, because then how will I know what kind of questions that the other teachers are asking? So the English teacher asked, even though it was a survey, all strictly about questions that you would think are normal for English class, books, do you like to read, do you not like to read? Okay? Other teachers, two of them, biology and math class, asked, in addition to other general questions, what is your preferred gender? Now, I opted out of that, nothing to do with his gender identity, his... Now, I opted out of that, nothing to do with his gender identity, his, his sexual preference, sexual orientation, whatever you want to call it. So I, I'm very upset with that. I'm very upset with that. And, and I am raising my voice to the man that just spoke behind me. No, no, you should be ashamed of yourself. What do I have to be ashamed of? What do I have to be ashamed of coming up here? This is, this is, I, I'm upset, I'm upset, I'm a parent. I have four children in the district. I, I have a lot vested in the town, okay? Thank you for your time.
Dana Alquinn, Wayne resident. I wanted to tell you all how great my daughter's first day of school was, but her first day is on Monday. Although it didn't happen yet, I know it will be amazing because she will be unmasked and not surrounded by Plexiglas. She will be able to see her teacher's face and understand her social cues, and there will be smiles shining all day, every day. The fact that we had to remove our daughter from the school system to give her these accommodations that she and every child who wants them deserves is nothing short of insane. The fact that I am now paying to give my daughter an education in what was considered normal conditions almost two years ago is something I never in my wildest dreams thought I would have to do. But here we are. We had to uproot our child because we felt that the mental, emotional, and physical risks of being masked for six hours outweighed the benefits. Where there is risk, there must be choice. All parents should have the choice to send their children to school masked or unmasked. This town has swayed drastically over to one side. We are not trying to sway it back to the opposite side, but back to the middle where choice lives, where people can decide what's best for themselves, their families, without discrimination, where both sides can be right. And there are certain people on the board who are standing in the way of this happening, certain people who do not have the best interests of all of our children at heart, certain people who a few short weeks ago spoke the words that if it was up to them, children would not be masked in September. I'm curious to know who flicked that switch back. Please do not use our children as pawns for your own political gain. It is a selfish act that shows you are not upholding the oath you took. But you can all prove me wrong right now and hold another vote to rightfully send the drafted letter to our governor. Let all voices on the board be accounted for since they weren't all heard last time around. Show us that you have our backs and you support choice. Whether the governor drops the mandate or not, we will know that you stand with us and not against us. And the brave members who stood with us last month, we applaud and appreciate you. I'm curious why the other members who oppose the letter being sent are catering to a loud minority in town, a group who name calls and slanders the other side on social media, a group that sends threats when someone has a different opinion than theirs. Different doesn't mean worse or better, and everyone has the God-given right to form their own opinions. Please help us fight for parental choice.
Shana Kegelman, Wayne resident. First, it's unfortunate that Stacy Scher could not be at the last meeting. I and many others feel that the vote to send a letter to Trenton did not take into account the majority of the Board of Ed. There was an injustice and one member did not get to voice her opinion. We want to hear her voice, her voice matters too. Second, has Wayne considered removing the Plexiglas from each student's desk for the school year? Is there a reason other towns do not have them up at every desk? Nothing looks more unwelcoming in a first grade classroom than twenty-something shields for masked children with hidden smiles. How many of you have spent some time with a young child that looks over to you to see your facial expression and gauge if they're doing something okay? Our children are completely missing such a critical part of their social and emotional development. Those are words I've noticed you all really like to hear in these new curriculums. I did unenroll my son this morning for this reason. I have stressed the difficulty he will have learning, and while I know your hands are tied with the masks, I haven't seen anywhere in the executive order where Plexiglas was mandated. Lastly, the pastor who has posted about those of us who don't want sex taught in our public schools, he is sharing that we are homophobic and transphobic. This is completely false, and how dare he spread misinformation? I support the gay community. I do not support teaching masturbation or sex into impressionable minds. My nine-year-old neighbor that plays dress up with my four-year-old daughter is not mature enough to learn about these vulgar topics this year. Not supporting defining anal and oral sex in eighth grade certainly does not make me anti-anything. And teaching, teaching not while families look the same is not the same as teaching sex. When will we focus on the basics? Enough is enough. It's a sin how political this Board of Ed behaves. You are playing political science. You care more about what King Murphy and Trenton thinks of you than worrying about your job. Your job is doing what's best for the children you were elected to represent, and I've asked before, when does it end?
My name is Bob Nullman. I am a resident of Wayne. Thank you for full-day kindergarten. I think it's a wonderful thing that you folks persisted, and especially thank you to Mrs. Kazan, who's been a longtime supporter of it. Takes a lot of guts to stand up for something that is at some time unpopular because people are worried about taxes, but the education of our children is paramount. I am a Vietnam-era veteran. I believe in the Second Amendment. Thank you. But how lame it is to have to listen to the false claims made by this angry group of pro-Trump supporters who are attempting to dumb down America and upend the advances that we've made in civil rights, civil discourse, and a more just society. And their attempt to oppose public health realities of the current pandemic is sheer madness, especially in light of the fact that our under-12-year-old students are still unvaccinated and can be spreaders. But I will not waste my time in addressing these phony paper tigers that they have created. Rather, I will use my time to implore the Board of Education members not to be bullied by this rude, loud, ridiculous protestation that we hear every time there's a meeting. Please see it for what it is, as a crude attempt to advance a false political narrative that opposes the teaching of factual history and denies our historical realities. This is a national right-wing assault on equality and equity, and it is trying to resurrect the failed Tea Party takeover of the recent past and deny reality. So here is a novel concept. How about leave the education of our kids to the educational professionals instead of the politicos? And how about we leave science to the scientists? So to those of you who determine our curriculum content, you folks sitting here, and I do believe that all of you have the, and I hope have the best interests of our children at heart, and this is not a political game, stay strong. Your job is to protect us from political ideologues and radical philosophies and to say, stay true to unbiased academic and professional values. I spent many years as a New Jersey mayor, so I know that it takes guts to stand up to loud mobs with their torches and pitchforks, but that is your job. Stay strong, don't be swayed by this transparent assault on the better parts of our culture. Please see this right-wing mob for what it is. Facts matter. We're all entitled to our own opinions, but we are not entitled to our own facts. Thank you.
Okay, calm down, or we'll clear the room. Calm down.
Brittany Coral, Wayne resident. I just have a question. I noticed that myself included, and the gentleman who just spoke before me, who I assume is in favor of masks, and in favor of masks for our students, I noticed he pulled his mask down to speak when at the microphone, and I'm wondering why? Why, why would you do that? Why would you do that, right? Because it muffles your voice, makes it difficult to communicate, and difficult to be heard. Now imagine you're a nine-year-old or a six-year-old, and you're sitting in the back of a classroom, at the very back, far away from your teacher, behind a Plexiglas shield that is dirty and smudged and difficult to see through, and there's a glare, and then you have a mask on. Have any of you sat behind those Plexiglas shields with a mask on and tried to speak and be heard to your student, to your teacher or someone standing at the front of the room? It's insanely hard, and it's frustrating. And guess what? I don't know why $100,000 of taxpayer money were spent on that when there's not a word in Murphy's executive order about it. Can anyone explain that to me? Okay, why? Okay, awesome. Because I'd love to know, because there's other towns around us that have not done that. So I'm not sure why that was done. I understand that with the mask executive order that you guys say that your hands are tied, I get it. Like we said, we just wanted you to have our back, voice our opinions, make our opinions heard to Trenton and to Governor Murphy, and just say, hey, would you consider making it optional? That's it. That was obviously too hard for you guys, and I'd like to echo the sentiments of the people that have spoken before me. And Ms. Scher, I'd love to know what your vote would have been had you been here. I also have a couple of comments. Contrary to what Mr. Freeswick requested tonight, I would beseech all of you on the board to fight and protect those of us who are choosing not to receive experimental gene therapy in the form of a vaccine. Does Mr. Freeswick believe that vaccines are effective? I'm sure that he does, otherwise he wouldn't have gotten one. So I'm confused why he's so obsessed with everyone around him also being vaccinated. Is that how it works? Everybody has to be vaccinated for it to work? I would urge all of you, look at Israel, the highest vaccinated country in the entire world. Do you know what other title they're holding right now? The highest COVID infection rate in the world. This is not a coincidence, people! And we all know, Mr. Giardano said, a vaccine mandate is coming for our kids. I'm urging you to protect them and protect the parental choice, because guess what? You're going to have a ton more people leaving this district if you don't. In England, Public Health England Medical Advisor Dr. Susan Hopkins says, "It is important that primary school children don't wear face coverings." She explains that this is because COVID infection rates are so low among their age group, and wearing face coverings could affect their development. Does that matter? Does that count here? Isn't that part of health development? Does that count? And I'm also, I'd like to point out, I'm also a frontline worker. I was a nurse, I worked the entire pandemic until I left on maternity leave, so I was nine months pregnant on COVID floors too, okay? And guess what? The unvaccinated are not the only people in these hospitals. And I just think it's incredible that you would like to pin this on the unvaccinated. When did you know that if you receive a vaccine, and even your second vaccine, but it hasn't been 14 days since your, since the jab, you are considered unvaccinated in the hospital?
That's your time, ma'am.
It's an interesting fact.
Thank you.
Look into it.
Nicholas Stellinas is on back again. One thing I want to make clear in this room is there is one very large stereotype, which is disgusting. There's people that have came up here and talked about how I'm mirroring my parents, and that is disgusting. Just because I'm a kid, does that mean I can't be smart, intelligent, that I can't have an opinion? It has to be my parents' opinion? Because I do not agree with everything with my parents. And for those who came up here that were in favor of masks and pulled their masks down, I would like to remind them, they are in a school, and I can't do that when I come up to talk to my teacher in a classroom. So why should they, why should they be able to do that? Mrs. Kazan, at the last meeting, you voiced your concern, saying for masks to work, everyone has to wear them, when you said that through a maskless voice. So why would you say that when you're not wearing a mask yourself in there? Now you're in a school, so you have to, but, and there, that makes no sense at all. And for someone else who came up here and said, if you don't go by the state mandate, you'll lose funding. Well, what's funny is, is people are attacking Governor Ron DeSantis for not, for taking funding from schools that will force mask mandates per his mandate to not allow them to have mandates. So it's a little reversed to me, so it's okay for that? It doesn't make sense. Now, we're going to go ahead and continue to let this happen in this school district where children are demonized if they don't want to wear a mask, if they are not vaccinated. That's just disgusting, and I, I don't understand how we, people said we are going to transmit it to our older people, or this, or that. Well, they have the opportunity to get vaccinated. If they get the vaccine, then why should they be concerned about me? Why should they be scared of me? I, I am an eighth grade student at Anthony Wayne Middle School, and I loved my school. Sixth grade was the best year of my life. Seventh grade, I could say is the worst year of my life that I have lived because of this board failing me. You failed me then, you are failing me now, and not once could I say you ever succeeded me on curriculum, you never succeeded me on masks, you never succeeded me on learning and education, and you let this happen? Mrs. Kazan, why did you not vote yes to sending a letter if you said if I had a, if, if it was up to me, you would be breathing in September? You said that on July 15th, and then you go to the meeting on August 26th and you vote no to do anything? That's hypocritical. You are going against your own words yourself, yourself.
Trying to hear my brow beating, could you stop clapping?
Saying, saying is one thing, doing is another thing. If you want to say something, you have to do it, especially when you're in an elected position like this. It makes no sense. And students have no voice in who their board is, and their board is, this board is the very board that fights against me. So stick up for me.
That's your time, thank you.
Please stick up for me. Thank you, thank you.
Hello again. While I was waiting in line at the last, while I was waiting in line at the last Wayne Board of Ed Town Hall, a few seated individuals began to speak at me, saying I should sit down, and that I should not speak because I don't have kids in the current Wayne school system. I did not acknowledge this poorly thought-out and rude attempt at discouragement. A few of the seated individuals then continued to go on about how living in Wayne or paying property taxes isn't enough of a reason to allow one to speak either. However, these are the same individuals that erupted in applause when a certain pastor with an unsuccessful governor run came to speak at previous Wayne Board of Ed Town Halls. The guy neither lives in Wayne nor his kids, who go to Wayne schools, he lives in New Vernon. He doesn't even pay property taxes there. He got his megachurch to buy his mega house. He exploits a loophole, he thinks he deserves it, doesn't live in your town, doesn't pay property taxes, doesn't have kids in your school, and he got a roaring applause. You think he's your friend? He wants to dismantle your public school system, put the achievement on his resume. Ooh, why would anyone do that? That's how you secure funding from right-wing dark money, big oil nonprofits, the critical requirement for getting ahead in Republican political world. So what's going on here? Why can't I speak while out-of-towners can? It's all about narrative bias. The strategy is to create a big echo chamber, no matter what, bring out-of-towners, those with political ambitions, paid protesters, whatever means necessary. To create a loud echo chamber, use it to deceive you, the Wayne Board of Ed, elected officials, pressure you into thinking that the echo chamber is right, that the echo chamber is the majority, that you're not doing your job. I'm not going to tell you this strategy doesn't work, because some Board of Ed members have gone ahead and proven it last time, that it works with the mask letter. I'm telling you not to fall for it, or at least don't fall for it again. Let's talk about how we should treat people. Insult, bullying, discouragement, deception, making things up as you go along, thinking you can get away with it just because your favorite president did? That's a shining example from the next generation, isn't it? I don't care what side people are on, you shouldn't treat people like that, period. Later, a member of the board had the audacity to say that the pro-mask group needs to start respecting other sides' opinions. I don't respect the layman's opinion on how to fly a plane, or how to build a bridge, perform heart surgery. Let me be clear, I don't respect Fox News, state-facilitated propaganda, nor do I respect its followers who masquerade as free, independent thinkers while guzzling down carefully crafted, corporate, interest-fear-mongering. We should all respect each other as people. However, unqualified, dangerous opinions on highly technical matters are a different story. This group is here trying to play at being epidemiologists. You need a PhD for that. And now they're here trying to play at being historians. Ah, a lot of qualifications for that one, too. What's next? They think, they think all this is your fault when it's, you know, coming from New Jersey Department of Education, mask mandates, the curriculum, 2020 statewide, New Jersey student learning standards. You guys are talking about sex ed, that's, that's in there. This is widespread throughout the whole, the whole state. They think it's your fault. They want to make the curriculum, they don't know who makes the curriculum. Let's leave things to the experts before we embarrass ourselves.
Pam Masick, Part Two. Courage isn't the absence of fear, and I know there's other teachers and paras and staff that are feeling targeted and fearful, and that's why I'm back up here. So, for the record, I wish to address, to address the incident whereby Mr. Toback and Ms. Reichman reported me back in July. Some teachers and students, oh, so, some teachers and students need to connect without their masks.
Ma'am, ma'am, you're back to a personnel matter.
No, no, I'm- No, no, no. This is public.
Yep, yep. You're back to a personnel matter.
They just talked about politics. You're telling me I can't address how I was written up?
We have a policy about personnel being discussed in public, madam.
State law prohibits the board from discussing personnel matters.
They're not discussing it, yes.
By letting you discuss it here, we are involved in it.
Well, if we can't discuss it, this is a one-sided conversation. So no, we can't discuss it.
So that's why we can't discuss personnel matters.
I'm not asking you to discuss it. It's my business. We're up here, a mom came up here and talked about what happened with her kid today, and that was personal. This is a personal issue. I'm being tar, I feel that you had, I got a notice that you, that I was being, discussed my employment because I was written up, because Mr. Toback and Ms. Reichman were in my class for 90 seconds, when the rest of the administration and teachers go without their masks? It's on camera? I can prove it, I have parents that'll back me up, and you're gonna, because of 90 seconds, I'm working with learning disabled kids? You know what this is like? This is like the Wizard of Oz, when the almighty, powerful Oz is bellowing commands and the citizens tremble. Well, courage isn't the absence of fear, but I'm here so others know to have courage and speak up. Do you know, when the curtain was pulled back, there was only a little man blowing wind? Now, you want to fire me for exercising my freedom of speech?
Address the chair, ma'am.
I told my children, I raised them, everybody, anybody can take away your home, your jobs, your relationships. It can affect your health. No one can take your integrity or your faith. Those are two things that only you can choose to give away. I suggest you search your hearts, find some integrity, and do the right thing, because I consider this harassment, intimidation, and bullying, which is a two-C statute in the New Jersey Criminal Code of Conduct. It's any engagement of communication, that repeated pattern of behavior that causes annoyance or alarm. Well, I'm very annoyed and I'm quite alarmed. So, for the record, stop!
That's your time.
Oh, because nobody else did it.
Ryan Badassil, 63, Camilo Drive. I just want to address the CRT stuff. I don't care what they call it. My daughter experienced it in school. That's what we are talking about, the continued racism that's getting into the school and how that's being supported. I don't mind if they put it down as a theory, as something that's going on somewhere else, but this is creeping into our schools, whether it's coming in through your curriculum, whether it's coming in through your teachers, whether it's just coming into the school. It's getting in and it's getting into our kids. So, we have an ability to opt out of all of these conversations that go on, for sex education, for diversity and inclusion, for everything, all the way up to the black movement, which I believe the Supreme Court has said must be in there, and I actually agree with that. They have a valid reason to be in there from the history of the United States. All of my kids officially, from this moment on, opt out of all of those conversations. As it happened, we had sent a letter to the teacher beforehand, saying that we did not want them involved in any of these conversations. The very teacher of the young girl that was then pulled aside and told that her life does not matter. We never received an answer from that. We asked at the ice cream social, and she said she was not allowed to give us an answer, that it had gone up the chain somewhere, and she was not allowed to give us an answer. This is my answer. They will not be taught any of that, why you continue to support this radical movement to put these things in front of my kids. And I am not talking about some theory that comes out of Fox News. I'm talking about what they experienced today.
That's it. Mr. Faber?
Thank you.
Sorry, that's it, twice.
Okay, so, pick up where I left off. So, several schools, and I'm saying this one again because I really want you to think about this one. Several schools have segregated classrooms to provide safe spaces for minority students away from white classmates. That's actually going on today. Okay. Then I want to jump to something a little closer to home. A social studies teacher in Wayne, New Jersey, who also served on the committee to recreate the town's mission statement, signed the ZIN education project's pledge to teach CRT, whether it is against the law or not.
Sir, you can't talk about it.
I didn't give anybody a name, but you have a teacher that, that signed a pledge that said, even if it's against the law, they will teach it.
You can report that privately.
That you should deal with. It's actually out in the news. I didn't find it on my own, I stumbled across it in a, in a news story that's all over the United States. That needs to be dealt with. So, CRT does exist, and people are pledging to teach it. Okay. It also says that we need activist teachers in our classrooms. An active, definition of an activist is a person who uses or supports strong actions, such as public protests in support or opposition of one side of a controversial issue. Okay, so, I want to give you an example of equity. Oh, actually, before I get to that, is this, this whole direction that I mentioned of all the other things that are going on in schools, is that where Wayne is headed? Are we going to these dramatic, drastic changes, and we're just doing it a little bit slower than everybody because you want to get us used to the fact that you're going to take us in this direction of all this craziness that's going on? Okay. So, we had, in 1981, landmark case Abbott versus Burke rulings by New Jersey Supreme Court changed the state funding formula to ensure that New Jersey's poorest districts received the same level of funding as the richest districts. I would say that's a pretty good example of equity. Why do these 10 districts, well, the top 10 districts, receive 39% of state allocated funding, and they have an average rank in the bottom 80% of our 577 school districts in New Jersey? Why, why doesn't it provide the results that it's supposed to? It doesn't seem like equity always works. Okay, so, is your objective to provide our children the same quality education as the highest-ranked public-private schools in the United States? Because that should really be the equity that you're searching for, is for us to be the best that there is. If that's not your goal, then we should really figure out why. What I know right before our eyes, history is being rewritten, erased, and being viewed through the lens of today's standards rather than those that existed at the time. Who will validate the information added and read the books on suggested reading lists that are added to ensure that everything is fact-based and not based on a newly-created set of facts to support a current narrative or ideology? I sincerely hope that the board will think long and hard about the unforeseen consequences their choices here may have to our children, because they have the potential to have lifelong impacts. Please keep the proverb in mind, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions," as you make every single decision and how we move forward. Lastly, I would love to hear what your vote would have been, Stacy.
Thank you.
Cindy Simon, I'm still in Wayne, they haven't worn me out of town yet. I'm going to be very quick. There needs to be very clear policy that is enforced across the line. When you're dealing with scenarios, like a child who is white, being told, that he, I figured it was he or she, I apologize, that he or she does not matter. That same policy applies to the black child, who is called the N-word. Or the child who happens to be straight but is willing to defend the right of other people to choose not to be straight from being called the F-word. The policies and the rules have to be the same. You can't allow one form of hate or discrimination and not allow another. There should be no hate, there should be no discrimination. All the children should feel welcomed, and parents, look, the number-one influence on children is going to be their parents. We can point fingers at the school board all we want. I don't think the school district is the reason that a little child came in and called, you know, that other child, you know, saying that child didn't matter. And I don't think the school district is the reason why, per se, that there's other children being called the N-word and the F-word. I think education is part of it, but I think it starts at home. We need to, as a community, start supporting each other and start respecting each other. That's all I got to say. Have a policy, be consistent, regardless who is the target of inappropriate conduct.
Cindy, I can't agree with you more. I echo her statements. I didn't expect that, and I'm very, very happy to hear her say that, because that's exactly what I was going to say. I also was going to say, my experience with CRT, and you all know it, because my child was the child that had a lesson that was inappropriate in school. I've spoken to many of you about it, it's been taken care of. I'm still not sure how many schools it was shared with, but that's another story that Donna and I will discuss. But I do want to share with the public that it does happen. So there's people that stand here that are not in the schools, that don't have children in the schools, and they say, "I've never seen CRT." You're not going to see it again. The, the way that it does happen, when it does, unfortunately, I know it's not, you guys, I know you're not telling people to go teach CRT. That's not happening. I know it's some rogue teachers that decide that they want their agenda to be shared with students, and they might go and teach what they feel is appropriate. That's where I would argue, and please ask you, to keep a very, very short leash on teachers and see what they're teaching in their lessons. We know the curriculum is not going to have CRT in it. We know that. We don't need to look for that. We know it's squeaky-clean, no CRT. We know that it is smoothly intertwined within lessons from teachers. So I urge you to hold those teachers accountable, because that's where you're going to see it stop. That's where we're not going to come and complain anymore, is when we know that the teachers are held accountable, when we come to you with our examples. And I'm very grateful that my example was taken care of, but I also want to let the public know that it does happen, and it did happen to my child. Secondly, what I am going to be looking at is SEL, because from what I read and what I learn, that is the avenue for CRT to be implemented in schools. That's what we're hearing. So prove us wrong. Show us what is going on in SEL. Because right now, I heard first day of school that there is about 10 minutes of SEL in elementary schools every day. I didn't know that that was going to happen. Why didn't I know that? Can you tell me what's going on in those 10 minutes a day? Because that's 50 minutes a week. That's almost an hour of loss of academics, which our children already lost a lot in academics last year, so I'm shocked that you would throw in something on SEL for 10 minutes a day. Please, if it's something amazing that's going to help our children, please let us know. I want to know what those lessons are going to be in SEL daily to our children in elementary school. Thank you.
Anthony Shakur, Pontiac Drive, Wayne. I'm here today because of my kid. This little guy over here brought it up, that because of his mask, he had rash on his face, and it was burning and itching. This was my kid last year. He had a bacterial infection on his face, on his lips, his nose, his cheeks, from his mask. The only way to get this, whatever this bacterial rash off, was to either have it scraped or a topical solution. One, I'm not having anything scraped off the face of my seven-year-old. And two, we can't apply a topical application because it's in his nostrils and on his lips and to his mouth. I want to show this to these people. All right, you guys can look at this. All right? Monday through Friday, the rash would flare up when he wore his mask. He would go home, Saturday, Sunday, it would calm down. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it would flare up again. I'm no doctor, but I think this is a bacterial infection caused by the mask. I looked up a couple things online just to see, there was a study found, a bunch of parents took their kid's mask that they wore for a day, sent it out to get tested, came back with a whole list of bacterial infections and pathogens and all kinds of good stuff. I didn't even bring that list with me, because I don't want to embarrass myself, because I can't pronounce half of the bacterias that are on that list. So, school was exciting for my kid, but now it's not. He's actually crying, doesn't want to go back to school because he doesn't want to wear a mask. He doesn't want his face to burn and itch, and now he's dealing with the stress and anxiety of having to deal with this. So, we respect the fact of any parent that wants to send their kid to school with a mask, just as I ask those to respect us if we decide to send their kid to school without a mask. Thank you. Oh, and one last thing before my three minutes is up. I couldn't see who said it, but somebody emphasized how they maintained social distancing and everything was great the first day of school, but yet, you're about 12 inches apart, you're about 18 inches apart, you're about, you, you may be okay, but you guys, I don't know. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annette Colossero. I'm a resident of Wayne, and I devoted my whole life to education, all right? And when I went to school, I applied for a scholarship, the highest test grades, if you got the highest grade, then you won the prize. You got the scholarship. It was the best. Now, and I've taught a lot of different things, you know, and you do, Madeline Hunter, all of these things came into teaching. And now, even though I'm retired, I still sub, I subbed here in Wayne, I was the French teacher. The kids were wonderful. They said, "Merci beaucoup" when I left. I thought they were great. Anyway, now I'm, I'm reading up on all of this CRT and all these catchphrases, critical race theory, SEL. What does that mean? Social, emotional learning. And the objective, you always have to search for the objective, is to help students, you make students, you get the students to develop their true identity and purpose. So that's the whole reason for this, correct? So that the kids can develop their true identity and purpose. And how do they do this? Well, the Harvard scholars and the law said that. This is attained based on critical race theory. That's how you teach a kid to develop their true identity and purpose. Okay? SEL, social and emotional learning. Race, gender, social justice, prosperity for all, equity. Okay? Used to be equality. I learned everybody was equal. That's how we were brought up. Nobody taught us how to reach our social gender and identity. We learned. We had guidance counselors if we had a problem. Guidance counselors do a great job. Okay. So now, if you go back to the basics of this, they get their identity, and the basics is the oppressed and the oppressor. Well, guess who's the oppressor? Racial, white race. Guess who's the oppressed? The people who aren't of the white race. And that's, that's what they're bringing into the classroom. That's how they're helping kids reach their identity. It used to be equality, now it's equity. What is equity? You guaranteed something in return. Not the best gets the prize. Not the best wins. You don't get rewarded if you're the best. Now, it's based, you have to allow for gender, race, racial differences. This all gets into it. Is that it? Is my time up?
Yes, ma'am, that's your time.
How do you get to the best part? Okay, thank you.
My name is Donna Reaver. I'm a teacher at James Fallon. Today was a good day. The kids were happy to be in school, the teachers and staff were happy to be in school. Can we just bask in that for a little bit? Let's be kind, courteous, and respectful. The public portions of these meetings have been anything but lately. There has been heckling and campaigning in the aisles as people are speaking, people are giving others the People are giving others the finger. The district is not only abiding by an executive order, but they are doing something to keep our kids and staff safe. So maybe, just maybe, we can join together and focus on making this, making the best out of this pandemic situation for our children. Thank you all for all of your hard work.
Maria Delicopranzo again, Wayne, New Jersey. I just wanted to, when the past speaker was up and she mentioned social emotional learning, I was confused because it wasn't what I read into what social emotional learning was, so I had to Google it while I was sitting there. So I just figured I would read what it says. What is SEL? Social emotional learning, commonly referred to by its acronym SEL, is the method of promoting holistic child development by teaching students skills such as self-regulation, persistence, empathy, self-awareness, and mindfulness. Why are schools teaching social emotional learning? Social emotional learning has practical benefits for the classroom by teaching students to regulate their emotions, pay attention, and work well with their peers. But it does a lot more than that. SEL has been shown to boost students' test scores and grades, promote on-time graduation and college enrollment, increase students' financial earnings as adults, and support their mental and physical well-being. So I just thought I'd share that with all of you, as I'm sure you're all aware because you've been involved in the development of the curriculum. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to finish with this. It just seems to me incongruent that you base a child's emotional development on looking, that kid's five years old, looking at other kids through a racial lens now, which we never did before. In all my years of teaching, we never did. And they try to, how do you, they measure a kid's success in this? You can't have, measure everybody's success by one set of goals. In the upper grades. Now, I taught mainly high school. What if a kid hears this in high school and, and he rebels and he says, "I don't buy this theory. I don't feel that I'm superior. I didn't oppress anybody. Nobody oppressed me." And that doesn't, that doesn't help my emotional development. So what happens to that kid? Is he now labeled a bigot or a racist because he disagreed with the theory? Does this go down on his record? Does this dossier follow him until he graduates? And then when he applies for college admissions, do they look at this and hold it against him, "Well, this kid's a racist, he's, he's not going to get the job"? You don't know. It's happening every day to people. I don't think it's going to work in high school. These kids will fight back. I know some of them that I had would. And they're going to say, "You're not going to pin that on me." And another kid will say, "Well, my relatives didn't do anything to you. Why should..." Yeah, I mean, these things, let's get real. This is how kids talk. And that's why SEL or CRT, whichever you want to call it, they start by indoctrinating five-year-olds because they know, they can be made, they can get these five-year-old kids to accept and feel guilty about things. Hitler had the same theory. He knew if you got a kid young enough, you can, you could mold that kid into whatever you want and be persuaded. But this is the USA, it's the greatest, most racially integrated country on this earth. Everyone clamors to get here. Okay? We have now, I think we're now 25th in reading and science among other countries of the world. Because maybe now we're basing too much time on racial differences and social things and everything. But the parents, in Wayne especially, are very smart. And they're not going to leave their kids' emotional learning up to CRT and SEL or whatever you want to call it. And so, it is not a community-based movement, this SEL. SEL came out of the hierarchy, not out of parents' concern for their own children. So I say, listen to the parents and parents, keep on fighting.
Hi, Tremaine Cunningham again from Rats Road. You know, I moved to Wayne about four years ago. I brought my house here specifically for the school system. I wanted my daughter to have access to the best academic career that I possibly could afford her. And I moved specifically here to Wayne. And it's very frustrating for me to sit here as a woman of color and hear things like, "Oh, why does race matter? Why is color being..." When it does matter. When it's every day in the news, still current, it's still impacting the way that we live. I'm a black professional woman and I have to walk through white space. I have to code-switch and I have to make myself small so not to offend. It upsets me when words like diversity and inclusion are used to provoke you. Why does that upset you? Equity, equality. You don't know what that means? Equality means that everyone has access to the same resources. Equity acknowledges that some people do not have those same advantages. For instance, I bet you kiss your kids every day and send them off to school and say, "Have a great day, be safe, work hard, do well." But do you also have to tell your child, "Hey, don't be loud. Hey, you're beautiful. Don't let people pick on you because of your brown skin." Do you have to arm your children because of the color of their skin to be protected against the onslaught of harassment? No, that's an example of your privilege. So equity recognizes that other children, they don't have that. And so, the curriculum is seeking to educate and expose children to all the differences that make up this world. This is a very diverse world. It's, it's getting more diverse every day. It's a textured fabric is what we are. And that's all the education is seeking to do, is to expose them that this is what families look like. This is what different races look like. Different, and to respect it. If you hide that information, if you hide the history and things that have happened, how are children ever expected to improve upon it? Sankofa, it's an African adage that means, "Pick up the gems from the past to enhance the future. Learn from the mistakes." I'm sorry the past offends you, but it happened and it continues to happen. And I did not move to this town to have anybody sanitize my child's education. I want her to hear it all, learn it all, and then it's my job as a parent to put it into context for her. If she doesn't like something she hears, she comes home and discusses it to me, I, as her parent, will put it into context for her. This is a partnership, the teachers and the parents. I'm not relying on the teachers to completely educate.
Thank you, ma'am, that's your time.
Thank you.
Madam President, seeing no one coming to the podium, I move to close.
Second.
Mr. Bubba, moved seconded by Mr. Giordano. Hi. Dr. Toback, did you want to address anything this evening or will you handle that at another time?
Can everybody hear me? Yeah, a little louder? Okay, what about now? Better? All right. So, I guess there is a lot to talk about. I'm not sure if I'm going to answer every question that was asked tonight, and I'm not sure that I'm going to sufficiently respond to all the different concerns because there's a lot of topics that were raised, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of things that you are, are you're concerned about. So I guess some of the things that we talked about, or some of the issues that were raised, there are issues about vaccine, masking, critical race theory, there's concerns about medical decisions being made by non-medical personnel, there's questions about policy, there's issues about division, there's questions about surveys, there's questions about the weather, there's questions about football games, there's questions about shields. So there's all kinds of different questions. I guess, so you have to understand that the school districts, every school district, whether it's Wayne or anywhere else, is built on policies. Policies are a reflection of state law. Okay? So that's, that is the bottom line. So we have lots of different policies that clearly spell out what the district does in a variety of situations. Okay? So for example, if there is a situation where a student makes an inappropriate comment, right, that was raised tonight, those issues are investigated and there's an HIB report, depending, that is reported at every meeting regarding these types of issues. Okay? There's also, the other thing is there's requirements. There's requirements in school, there's requirements out of school. So the issue of football games and how students are seated at football games and how students are together during football games and what they do after football games, those are all things that are, you know, they're on school property, but they're outdoors. There's rules for that. Now, if you don't think that the administration of the board doesn't see that there's maybe some inconsistencies out there regarding, you can go to a restaurant, but then you have to wear a mask in school. You can go to a concert and you can wear, but you have to wear a mask in school, all these things. Too many people don't make sense and we understand that. But ultimately, there is this executive order that requires when you're in school, you have to wear a mask. Another policy that existed, last year, students wore masks throughout the year, right? When we were in session, students wore masks. And so there is no new policy regarding if you have an issue concerning your child wearing your mask. There's no last-minute decisions about that. There's been a procedure that we've had since last year that allows parents to come forward and say, "Listen, my child has this issue, my child has that issue. There's different reasons why you might want to do that." There's been some parents who have, who've sent us a variety of emails about, they have specific issues and we guide them through the process and we say, "Hey, you know, how, what is it that you have? What is your documentation?", things like that. So there's a process, there's, there's policies, there's processes in place to deal with many of the issues we brought, brought up tonight. I know that there's a lot of discussion about critical race theory, right? And so the fact is that critical race theory is, is something that is a hot topic across the country. But as one of the parents pointed out, it is not a part of our curriculum at all, anywhere. But there's another piece to it that maybe you don't know about. And so there were, there were a few cases that were brought to the attention of the administration last year and as pointed out, they, they were investigated. Okay? That, the number of cases that were reported, that were looked into, numbered a total of six, I believe. So I don't have my statistics with me, but I believe there were six cases of situations where parents took exception to lessons that teachers were teaching. And that's, you know, keeping in mind, last year, most of the year, parents were able to hear what's happening in the classroom. So the point is that there were, there were six situations of which not all of them were found to be inappropriate. And the whole point is that out of thousands and thousands of lessons, yes, the district has procedures to, to deal with these issues. With regard to masking and the weather, okay? So one of the parents raised the issue about that. So we have this executive order and yes, there is an exception for when we have excessive heat. Okay? Today was not one of those days, tomorrow's not going to be one of those days, maybe Monday is. But if that's the case on Monday, then the district makes adjustments. The weather forecast as it is, it's, you know, maybe you can rely on what's going to be forecast for tomorrow, but to rely on that for what's going to happen on Monday and to rely on that information now to make a decision about that would be inappropriate. It would be like me calling a snow day, you know, a week in advance. It just, it wouldn't make sense. With regard to surveys, so there was a parent who raised an issue, a very emotional issue about surveys. So the opt-out that we have in the district, if you read it, is, it pertains to surveys relating to like things that the district, the district survey. Okay? So something that comes from the district level, not something necessarily, that's a classroom survey. So classroom surveys are in many cases conducted by teachers all across the district, very simple, basic things. And so if there's a concern about a particular question that was asked, that's an issue for the building principal to first deal with and handle. Much like I said, if there's, if there's an issue where there was an inappropriate comment made by a student, that's a code of conduct violation and that would also be something that's handled by a policy. There's a question raised about shields, right? Why do, why do we have shields? Who's, who's paying for these shields? Why do we spend all this money on shields? So if you recall, last year, there was, we, we lived in a little bit of a different world, right? Because in the end, nobody had a vaccine. Okay? So we had this, this return-to-school plan and we had, you know, our schools were shut down for a little bit of time in the middle of the year when the pandemic was at its worst. As we started to come back and as we started seeing more students in the school, yeah, the district bought shields because that was what was recommended at the time. Okay? So you have a rollback, you have a different set of rules now. Shields are not required, but we still have these shields. So they're not required, that's, that's no secret, but are they, have they been installed in classrooms, at least for the time being? The answer is yes. Not all classrooms. And so it all depends, but ultimately, yeah, we do not necessarily have to have a world of shields and masks and everything like that. However, right now they're installed. Well, it doesn't, it doesn't mean we shouldn't have them and really it's, it's kind of up to a teacher. If you have a class of 28, then having 28 students in a class in close quarters, maybe, maybe it is a little bit better to have shields because ultimately you could have some very crowded classrooms. And the other thing is like, sort of related back to the football game, I neglected to mention this, but if school employees are outside of school, right? Or board members are outside of school, they, they work on those rules. So the whole point, if someone is somewhere in the community and they're not wearing a mask, that's because they don't have to, right? Just like you don't have to. Like I said, there's rules that are very specific to schools. Everything else, there's another set of rules. In most cases, especially if you have your vaccine, you don't, you don't have to wear a mask, right? So that's, that's just another thing. Let me see what else we have here. There's a lot of things we talked about. So we talked about the issue of vaccines. So Mr. Freezer Wade raised some issues about the district policy regarding mandatory vaccines. Okay? So there is no district policy about mandatory vaccines. That's an executive order from the governor of the state. Okay? That order does not take effect until the middle of October and the reality of the order is that it's not totally spelled out yet as far as exactly what happens, but we have time to do that. That's why it takes effect October 18th. It's not something that has to happen immediately. But those are all things that would be discussed in public, so that way the public is very much aware of what's being done. The other thing that was brought up, it was like a lot of, a lot of speakers tonight spoke about really what are like, like national issues. And you rightfully are concerned about how these issues might make their way into the school system. Okay? So national issues that you hear about on the news or you read about, these are all things, and I understand you're, you're concerned about the future, you're, you're concerned about the school system that your children will be attending and what they'll learn from the school system. I, I think we had this forum and we have all this information, we spent a lot of time putting together a presentation, we did everything we could to try to help the community understand everything that we could possibly put together regarding our curriculum, regarding concerns that people expressed about sex education. That information remains online. I think it answers just about every one of the questions that was asked tonight. And of course, the very clear thing is that there's this time period where there are new standards, there are requirements that will be eventually attached to those standards, but none of that exists right now. So like if you're saying, "Well, my kid learned this from this new curriculum", no, they didn't. Because there is no, there's nothing new regarding the curriculum right now. None of those changes have been made. There's, there's, there's a few minor changes that we did talk about regarding some issues of diversity, but the diversity, the mandate, that all kicks in later down the road. Okay? So let's see if there's anything else here. Trying to just go through if there was questions that I didn't answer. Ms. Rashman, do you have anything you'd like to add? Is there anything that you would like to share? Are you good? Okay, go ahead.
But first I just wanted to comment that on August 6th, Governor Murphy signed an executive order 251, which we've talked about many times, which is marrying, wearing masks in schools. order 251, which we've talked about many times, which is marrying, wearing masks in schools. Beginning August 9, we follow the executive orders in our schools. What we do outside of school may not be consistent with what we do in school, because when we're in school, we follow the executive orders. It's my goal today and every day, today marked my 18th first day of school, and it's always my goal and number-one priority to keep our students and staff consistently in school in the safest and most healthy environment. I have heard and fielded so many calls from parents over the past few weeks, parents who returned to their jobs in the workplace, who were able to share childcare concerns and what type of situations they would be in, financially, personally, just being able to hold their jobs, hold on to them, and the fear of what might happen if schools are closed. So again, it is so important that I emphasize the need to be compliant with the governor's executive orders, because when there is a contact tracing situation that comes our way, we work with the Department of Health, we work with the nurses, and we follow the rules. And it is my job and my responsibility to be able to keep our school doors open and provide a place for your children to safely attend every day as per Executive Order 251. Outside of school, the rules are very different, and we all make personal choices based on what we're comfortable with. It may be based on your vaccination status, may be based on your personal beliefs. But again, outside of school is very different from inside of school. It's also crucial that we follow the executive orders because we need to protect our federal funding. The federal funding that we have received has been quite significant. That is what has paid for the intervention programs, the remediation programs, our software programs to benchmark our students, our enrichment programs. We have wonderful plans for after-school support help for our students for this year. We had terrific programs in place for summer. And again, this was a result of federal funding that we received because we are in compliance with all of these orders. And I think it's really, really important to consider the thoughts and feelings of our school community. We have a very large school community, over 7,500 students. You can do the math and think of how many parents are impacted, and many parents whose voices are not represented tonight. So again, it's not about personal opinions, or, it's about doing the right thing. It's about doing what we all have to do, doing our part to keep our doors open so our kids can safely attend school every day. In listening to the concern expressed on the gentleman who shared the pictures of his son, there are qualifying medical exemptions. We have a process in place, and I shared that at the back-to-school presentation. Everyone may not have been present for that. Go through your building principal if you have a concern. If there is a medical reason why your child cannot be in a mask, then go through the 504 exemption process. If you have medical documentation, it will be reviewed by the 504 committee, and we can discuss this personally with you. We would never want a child to be in a situation where they were uncomfortable and had a medical condition that impacted their ability to learn and function during the school day. So again, as Dr. Toback shared, there are many policies and procedures in place. We follow the procedures, we have policies in place, and we're doing everything possible to keep our doors open and keep kids comfortable in the safest environment possible. It's also super-important that we protect our teachers and make sure that they're able to consistently be in our schools every day for your kids, because it would be really difficult for them to get started with a teacher and then have a disruptive environment where a teacher's home for 10 days. Oh, I'm just trying to think if there was anything else. I think that's it for me.
You good?
Yeah.
So just a few final thoughts. So there was a question about whether medical decisions about, I guess, masking and a bunch of other things are being made by non-medical professionals. So of course, you know, most of the requirements that we follow come from either the New Jersey Department of Ed, but that's informed by the New Jersey Department of Health, so medical officials are involved in that. Not to mention the fact that last year and this year, we had a bit of a celebrity, Dr. Goldberg, right? Remember Dr. Goldberg? So he was our consultant last year, so he works here at St. Joseph's Hospital, but he is our medical consultant. He works for the district, and he gets involved when there are questions about medical decisions that have to do with the pandemic or any course of action the district is taking, we consult with Dr. Goldberg. So he is still available to us. We still have a consulting contract with him. Then there's another question about, I guess, quarantine, right? So the main point, I guess, is this whole thing with masking, right? I wrote that in my letter to our parents. So the bottom line is, if you're wearing your mask and you keep your distance, right, depending on the situation, the fact is, students don't have to quarantine, which is a big thing. And that keeps more of our kids in school. And the other thing, I was hoping, one thing we could agree to for future meetings is to do this. It is very important to understand, I know, like, a lot of people have, over the past few months, brought up the issue that the pandemic and the virus is generally not lethal to children. Right? So people have brought that up over and over again, right? That's been raised many, many times. We understand that. But I hope that all of you understand, there's a lot more to keep a district up and running during a pandemic than just considering that one fact. Okay? There's a lot of people that work for a district, there's a lot of people who have medical issues, there's a whole lot of people, there's 1,400 students in the district that are identified as medically fragile, that have different issues, medical issues, that the parents are concerned about. So, and you also have the issue of the unvaccinated, which some of you may disagree with, but the fact is, there's other people who say, "I wish my child was vaccinated. I'd feel much safer." So, but that is something that really, I don't know, like, I just think it's no longer productive to talk about that, the fact that they're, we know that, and we're very much aware of that. But again, our goal, our goal is to keep the district up and running, and our goal is to make sure that as many people get the education that their children deserve and that their children need. So we want to make sure that our schools are in session. I think that covers just about everything.
Does that conclude your comments?
I guess one other thing, real quick. So there was also questions about how many students are, have COVID, and how many students, right now, there's, right now, there's 110 cases among our students, and we report that at most meetings. You know, this is not one of those meetings where we do that report, because we have other things that we're discussing tonight, but there's 110 cases right now, four of which were reported today. So the virus is still active in the district, 110 is a lower number for our situation. And we talked last year about when things kind of get a little tough to cover in terms of staffing and, you know, the number of students that are contagious. So, but right now, we have 110 cases of verified cases of COVID among students and staff. Not right now. I don't have, I have a report that I usually give to the board, but I don't have it right now. I will say that the pattern generally follows that the high schools are much larger schools, and those are the places where most of the cases happen.
Good. That's it?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members. Any comments? Anyone?
I would just like to answer Nicholas's question. I'm sorry, I guess he went home to bed, so we can get up and get ready for school tomorrow. I definitely think we should look into, possibly, Nicholas's claims that he had zero mask break. I would like that investigated. As far as my, changing my mind, I did. I did it because the pandemic changed its mind. It went from green zone to red zone in a matter of a few weeks after I made my statement. I'm not afraid to change my mind when the conditions change, and the conditions change dramatically and quickly. It happened several times last year, just when we thought we were hitting a spell of great news, the virus would rear its ugly head. So as far as my vote, I voted the way I did because I feel, as an elected official, we have to follow the rules and we should set that example. And losing funding is not an option. Losing a child is not an option, and those are not things I would encourage or ask a governor to change his mind for. I'm sorry. I voted my conscience. I didn't vote politically, and I don't feel my vote was hypocritical. But of course, that's how I feel. And Nicholas, I hope you get a mask break. We'll look into that, and we'll look into any of the other claims you made about how a teacher may have spoken to you. That is our job, to protect students. The other comment I would like to make is that we do have a chain of command. A lot of the situations that were brought up here can be discussed with your teacher personally or with your school principal. As far as where I go for a cocktail on my free time, I'm not going to tell you where I'm headed this evening, but if you want to take more pictures, I'd like a copy. I hope you got my good side. I do need to remove my mask to have a drink. And finally, what was the last thing I wanted to say? Oh, Mr. Esposito. We moved, we didn't move the venue per se as far as you're used to the summer. The summer, we have usually only two meetings. We ended up having four. Typically, we have two meetings a month. The first one is called our work session. That's what we're doing here this evening. Work sessions usually include presentations, full discussion on matters that we move to the next meeting. Normally, those would be in our board offices at 50 Nellish Drive. And considering the attendance that we've been seeing from people like yourself, we did not think that was a large enough venue for this meeting. So we moved it here so that everyone could spread out, feel comfortable, be as distant as you like. Our next meeting will be, as usual, at the council chambers. So nothing nefarious. This is our normal order of business. So I hope that answers your question. Can I get a mover?
No.
Mrs. Patta?
Second.
Mr. Giordano. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.